Merrimack TV is committed to our community. From gavel-to-gavel coverage of town and school board meetings, to updates on town services and projects, we aim to keep you connected.
Good morning, I'm Kyle Fox, Public Works Director for the Town of Merrimack.
Hi, I'm Diane Trippett. I'm the Town Clerk Tax Collector for the Town of Merrimack.
I'm Captain Matt Tarleton with the Merrimack Municipal Police Department.
And keep the public informed of every motion.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye?
And many moments, so you can be confident that we're here for you. Thanks for watching. Stay connected. Follow Merrimack TV on Facebook.
Okay. Good evening. Welcome to the November 19th special meeting of the Merrimack School Board. The first item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. Please unmute your phones. Join me in standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Great, thanks. The second item is about public participation guidelines for remote meetings. So because we are remote, we can't take live testimony. So if anyone wants to send any public comments to the school board, please send them in the following way. You can send an email to publiccomments@sa26.org. And you, again, I'll repeat the email address. And you can send those comments to us. We do require your name and your address for the record. So if you are sending the email, you must include the name and address, which is important, so that we can read your comments and put them into public record. Based on the amount of information we get tonight, our goal is to always read verbatim the comments that we receive. If the comments do become too heavy in volume, we would just have to read public comments into the testimony. We would just not read the public comments into the testimony. So it's really an all-or-nothing proposition. So every meeting that we've had that's been remote, we've had the ability to be able to read the comments, but we just like to put a disclaimer up front in case we should get an overwhelming number of public comments that we would not be able to read. But they would still be part of the public comments and be attached to the meeting minutes. Okay. I think that's it. The next item on the agenda is the COVID-19 update. It's administration's recommendation regarding the status of schools through Martin Luther King Jr. Day. Mark McGlaughlin.
Thank you. So if you allow me, I'm going to share my screen. And I'm going to... Can you all see that?
Zoom? Oh, there we go.
Are you able to see that?
You see your slides?
Yep, I can see the slides.
Are folks able to see this?
Yes, I can see it.
Yes. I think Mark's audio may not be working.
We can't hear you, Mark.
Mark, did you hit mute?
You're showing on mute, yeah.
There you go.
Oh, he's still on mute.
There we go.
I'm gonna try to show you my, share my screen.
We could see the slides before.
Okay, how about that?
Yep. And then go to slideshow.
Are you able to see them?
Yes.
If you click slideshow at the top, then it'll be a bigger, clearer version.
Are you able to, can anybody hear me and see the slide?
I think he can't hear us.
Mark, we can hear you. Can you hear any of us?
I just texted him.
Great, thank you. I was just gonna start.
Yeah, you went mute again. There you go. It's like when you turn on your slideshow, it mutes you somehow. Or you can't hear us.
Maybe turn off your video. Maybe that's taking too much of your computer bandwidth.
He needs the slides.
But if he doesn't show himself, if he doesn't project.
Mark, can you email me your... Can you email your slides to me and I'll run them and you just advance me through them?
That's perfect. Yep, so apologies.
Yep, email the slides.
Okay. One second.
John, is that what you just sent?
Yes.
Okay, I have it.
Thank you.
So here it comes, and just tell me when you're ready to advance.
Okay.
I just lost them, I'm okay. Mark, fine.
There we go.
So apologies for that. So thank you for allowing this, once again allowing the opportunity for a special meeting tonight to provide an updated recommendation. Nancy, you can advance. So on October 28th, you know that we had, we provided an update to the board and the community because at that time, we had promised that we would have evaluated our conditions from the beginning of school through October 28th and that we would provide an opportunity for the board and the community to get a sense of how things were going. And on October 28th, 2020, I introduced our color system that talked about where we are at the moment or where we intended to go. That was green, meaning go, maintain current operations. And what that meant on October 28th and means as of, you know, today is that we maintain our hybrid operation option, our fully remote option, and then an allowance to switch options. That was our recommendation on October 28th, based on the data and the experience factor that we had gained up to that point. Next. Also on that date, I provided information about two other scenarios. One was what we termed the red scenario, and that referred to the possibility there would be a sudden and unplanned closure due to a variety of reasons roughly around multiple close contacts within a school or across schools. And then we indicated several other possibilities. Student or staff member tests positive, multiple close contacts, contact tracing is inconclusive, and so on. So that scenario, that red scenario, was the situation on mid-October when we were required to shut down the middle school. There were multiple close contacts, and because of the nature of the position of the individual and the job responsibilities, it was determined that there really were too many contacts to even trace and that we would have to, as a result, shut down. The red scenario happened also in March. It was very difficult in March for everybody, as you know, because what happened then was that we had a sudden shift to having to close. That is never a good thing if you can avoid it. But that was what we encountered. So we talked about the possibility of a sudden and unplanned closure. You can advance, Nancy? So we also talked about another possible scenario, and this one we called the purple scenario. And that was a sudden or anticipated closure. And we indicated that that was most likely to happen, if it happened, because of staff or administration capacity to conduct classes and school operations or a limit to our ability to conduct class and school operations. And we indicated at that time that there would be a number of possible reasons for that. Some having to do with staff or administrator or child or family illness or quarantine, the impact of other districts' decision on Merrimack staff, more students requesting remote instruction, more staff requiring remote instruction, high staff absenteeism. And also importantly, we said that there might be a reality facing us relative to cold and flu. Because remember that all along, we have said that we are not going to self-diagnose or ask others to self-diagnose illness. And so if a student or a staff member presents symptoms that mirror COVID-19, that that would be a reason to not come to school. And then there are a number of protocols to follow, which we have been diligent in following. And I think our diligence in following them, along with the cooperation of our students and staff, has largely been the reason that we've been able to be so successful. But one of the things that we said is that it would be very good if we saw a problem coming to anticipate that and try to do something about it. So that's what we talked about on October 28th. Next, Nancy? So we also said that the biggest factors that could contribute to school or district need to transition would be things like traveling outside of New England, holiday travel in particular, cold and flu, and if you go to the bottom, increased community spread. So that was not on the slide in October, but it clearly is a factor that we need to consider when we're looking at our current conditions. And so we tried to anticipate that what was true on October 28th was true for that moment. And those of us who work in schools have long since realized that COVID changes by the second. And so what's true one day isn't necessarily true the next. But we were trying to anticipate for you what was, or tried to describe for you what was the case for us at that moment on that day, based on our data, and then anticipate what might happen in the future. So next, Nancy? You can, yep, thank you. So now today, what has changed? So I think if you pick up the newspaper or look at WMUR, even today, the governor's announcement, we see that there is increased national, state, and community transmission. The daily PCR test positivity rate, that's the longer, not the rapid test, COVID test, but the longer test, it's more reliable, that test positivity rate in New Hampshire is now sitting at 4.3, and it's likely higher in the south-central region. And according to Department of Health and Human Services, a positivity rate of greater than 3% is indicative of community spread. And so I do not have data for Merrimack, but the state of New Hampshire is at 4.3, and we live smack dab in the middle of the, sort of the hottest zone in the state at the moment. So it stands to reason that what we're beginning to see in our schools makes sense because it reflects the increased positivity rate since we last met in October to talk about our status. So you can advance, Nancy? So the challenge is different now. And I want to just point out that we have been very, very fortunate because we have had a board who has provided policy supports to us during this time. So we've had the mask policy, the travel policy, and the communicable illness policy, all of which we have been able to use to enforce the conditions that have been able to keep us in school. We have also invested and put in place intensive PPE in all our schools. We've enforced social distancing protocols within our schools in the hybrid model for people who are there live. And I really want to make this point. With the cooperation of our students, staff, and families in-school transmission has been avoided. And that is a success story. And I'm very proud of that. And I'm grateful to our teachers and students, administrators, students and families who have worked so hard to support us in that. It's really made a difference. But the challenge is a little different now. It might have been the case, when we were thinking about this in the summer, that a reason that we might close would be because of the spread of COVID within our schools. Well, we've been able to push back on that, and that has not been the case. But the impacts...
I think we lost them.
Oh, okay, I thought maybe I was the only one. Mark, can you also speak up if possible?
Yes. Can you all hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. So the impact, the impacts of COVID on our schools, however, have not been avoided. And I want to remind everybody that, something I said some time ago, that what happens in a community happens to our schools. And that's really important. What happens in a community happens to our schools. We just show up every day and do what we do as best we can, but what happens outside impacts our ability to deliver our services. So what I'm here to tell you is that in a relatively short time, the organizational supports that keep a school going are becoming significantly strained. And that is a result of what we have been experiencing in New Hampshire and more broadly with increased COVID cases. So you can move to the next slide, Nancy? So I want to just provide you all with some data that will help to illustrate the challenge that we're talking about. So let's just talk about students for a minute. We have student absences, and these are just related to COVID-related issues. So we have been doing a very good job, and I want to thank our administrative staff and our nurses for this. But whenever a student is out, we determine whether they're out because they bumped their head or whether they are out because they have some COVID-related illness or contact that requires quarantine, and we follow DHHS guidelines. So in the weeks of 10-19 to 10-30, that's October 19th to October 30th, there were 11 student absences at Thornton's Ferry as a result of COVID-19, whether they were confirmed positive or there was a reason for quarantine as a result or close contacts, what have you. So that was 11. And then from November 2nd through this date, that number is 36. At MES, that number has gone from 21 in the last two weeks of October to 31 from the beginning of November to today. At Reed's Ferry, that number was 14 from October 19th to the 30th and is now at 41. At Merrimack High School, that number was 74, and now it is 103. The number at the middle school shows zero for the last two weeks of October because that coincides with the closure of Merrimack Middle School. But now from November 2nd to November 19th, that number is 36. And then at the upper elementary school, there has been the least increase, 30 to now 31. And when I say extended student absence, what I mean by that is that if a student presents with any scenario that connects to COVID-19, like for instance, they have a family member who was a close contact. They have a family member who was confirmed positive. They themselves have symptoms that mirror COVID-19. Depending on the scenario, students are out for a period of time. In the case of confirmed positive or quarantine because of a close contact, that could be as many as 14 days or longer, depending on the extent of the contact in the home. For those who are just awaiting a test result, that lasts as long as it takes to get the confirmed test result back. So that's going to be an important data point in a few minutes when I talk to you about the recommendation. Nancy, you can move?
Mark, can I just ask for clarification real quick? Are these numbers specific, they're specifically related to COVID? Not the kids that show up with a sniffle or a symptom and then they get sent home until they come back with some type of a test?
Nope. These are all, let me just clarify. These are, these numbers reflect the students who are out for COVID-related reasons. Now, that doesn't mean that they're all COVID-positive. What it means is that we have said for a long time that we are going to ask a student not to attend school if they present with symptoms that mirror COVID.
So these include numbers?
Between a COVID cough and a flu.
But these include, these include the numbers of those students that we can't differentiate, right?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
That's correct. Yep, yep. Nancy, you can advance. So I want to talk about staff absences due to COVID-19. And Cindy, it's the same phenomenon that you were asking about students. So in the week, the two weeks of, at the end of October, including the time period that I presented to the board, there were 32 COVID-related absence, staff absences. And now, from the two weeks from 11-2 to 11-19, that number has gone to 116. And that is just in, you know, up to today. So what's really important here to remember, unlike other, you know, businesses and so on that might be able to operate on a reduced staff, it is not the case in schools. We have live people for whom we're responsible to teach, but also to maintain safety and supervision. And so we need to rely on staff to provide coverage in the case of absence. And that generally is substitutes. What we're going to talk about in a few minutes is our need increasingly to rely on other folks in addition to that, to provide that coverage. But, so if you move to the next slide, Nancy, we can talk about that. So I'm going to actually, at this point, ask our human resources manager, Melissa Gagny, who has done a phenomenal job of tracking this information and then providing supports to schools, if she could just walk you through these slides. So I'm going to turn it at this point over to Melissa.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Can you hear me okay? So this is just numbers mostly on this slide, so a little bit of comparison. So the ability to...
Melissa, you're really quiet. Is there any chance you could turn up your volume a little?
How's that?
A little bit better.
All right, let me try.
Go into your audio settings, Melissa?
It's all the way up. Is that better now?
A little bit, yeah, actually.
All right, so the ability to cover classes due to COVID-19 and related impacts. So the total substitutes with availability for last school year, the 19-20 school year, we had 158 substitutes pick-up shifts. So far this year, we've only had 48 substitutes pick-up shifts. This includes what Dr. McGlaughlin has spoken about in the past, where we've had floaters. So floater substitutes are designated substitutes Monday through Thursday, assigned to specific schools. So we have sort of a cushion to have staff available. That includes that number. A decrease of 110 substitutes. The average fill rate, which is the percentage of filled vacancies, 9-9 to 2019 to November 2019 is 80, was 84.5%. This year, we're down to 70.95%, a decrease of 14.5%.
Melissa, before you advance the slide, if I could just interject here for a minute, I want to just point out the floater because that's really important. That was an innovation that we introduced this year because we anticipated that we were going to have a greater-than-normal number of sub shortages and teacher absences because of the pandemic. And so what we did was we, for the first time, we contracted with a group of people who would become more or less permanent substitutes for our district. So we put them under a temporary contract, which meant that they couldn't, we wouldn't call them each day. We still do that, too. But that we wouldn't call these people each day. And, you know, maybe they're in Londonderry one day and Bedford the next. We wanted them to be ours. And so that was kind of an innovative way to supplement our sub pool, and that's what we mean by floaters. And I just want to make mention of the fact that Melissa worked very hard to get us that 18, and each principal would tell you that they have been lifesavers. But that phenomenon is taking a hit as well. So, sorry. You can go ahead, Melissa.
Nope, absolutely. And we did a similar thing with nurses, which we'll talk about in just a moment if we go to the next slide. So total percentage of substitutes not working September to November 2019, we only had 39% of our subs not taking a shift. This year so far, 76% of our active sub list is not picking up any shifts, a decrease of 37%. This is due to multiple reasons. Main impact is the unknowns of the virus, unfortunately. Floater substitutes, at the beginning of this year, we had 18. As of November 19th, 2020, we are down to 14, a decrease of four. Multiple reasons, some COVID-related, some not. Nurses, we had five floating sub nurses Monday through Thursday as of the beginning of the school year. To date, we are down to three, one of which is only Monday through Thursday, one is Tuesday, Thursday, and one only works on Thursday. So that's impact greater due to availability and multiple other reasons, as I mentioned. Next slide?
So I just want to, just, I'm going to interject again, Melissa, because I wanted to just take note for a minute. In the midst of a pandemic, when it would be very, very important to have as much, you know, as much nursing support as we can, we are down nurses through no fault of anybody's, but we are down nurses. So that is a point of real concern when we are in the middle of a crisis like this, do not have a full staff of nurses. There are some fundamental things that schools have to promise, and that is one of them, and that is a real challenge.
Absolutely. So then we look at the comparison of October 28th, 2020, to where we are now. So a snapshot was 43 absences on October 28th, 2020, with a 74% fill rate. We still had our 18 floater subs, our five floater nurses, and some of our own nurses needing leave of their own. When we look at to date, 46 absences, down to a 69.2% fill rate, down to 14 floating substitutes, three floater nurses with the reduced availability, as we mentioned on the slide prior, again with our own nurses needing some type of leave or accommodation of their own. Next slide? Another important thing to note is these reduced fill rates and the need for substitutes does not take into consideration the vacancies that we have right now. Typically, at this point in a year, we'd hope to have most of our vacancies filled. Typically, at this point in a year, we'd hope to have most of our vacancies filled. However, at this point in the school year, we have seventeen para educator vacancies, eight food service or lunch monitor vacancies, four vacancies in the maintenance department, two vacancies in Title One, and one special education teacher vacancy. So that has provided challenges of their own. We try our best with the substitutes that we have, however, with the low number of forty-eight substitutes that have picked up shifts, that still leaves the daily absences to be covered as well. Mark, would you like to speak on this, or would you like me to?
No, I think if you could, if you could just speak and I'll comment in a bit, but please feel free.
Absolutely. So there has certainly been some evolution with other districts, and we have some additional impacts that will impact our staff being able to report to work. So staff members seeking support through FFCRA due to their home district going remote for the holidays. Recently, Londonderry and Milford have confirmed going remote for a period of time. We also have Manchester and Nashua that have been remote since the beginning of the school year. So while the impact isn't directly related to between October twenty-eighth and now, it has been felt by our district since the start of the school year, and we have tried to be as accommodating as we possibly can. Other districts in South Central are considering whether or not to go.
So this, this I want to just, if I could just interrupt for a minute, this is where I will jump in. So I meet with the South Central superintendents periodically, and we just met the other day, and the question that was on everybody's mind is what are other districts experiencing, what are they doing? So my, what I can tell you is that colleagues in other districts, some I think will, will continue to work through, and the reason for that, I think, is as different as the districts themselves. So a comparison between districts is not helpful because there are so many local conditions that make one thing true in one district and another not true in another district. But I know that a number of districts are currently considering this very option and may well, within the next few days or weeks, make similar, you know, make their own announcements. But I just want to point out that this is an active conversation that everybody is having in the South Central region. And then the, so as a consequence of that, what we're trying to do is anticipate leave requests, leave or requests for remote assignments as a result of those changes that have already been put in place by other districts and are likely to be put in place at least by a few more. And, and so the result of that is it's likely to further strain our current instructional and service delivery model. And so I just wanna put a fine point on that. We have talked a lot at the board level about trying to anticipate a challenge before it starts and, or before it hits. And it, and as we see the, the landscape ahead of us, that's what we're trying to do here today. Anticipating potential difficulties down the way and then trying to do something proactive about them. So Nancy, the next slide, please. So I'm going to turn to John Fabrizio, who's our assistant superintendent for curriculum and instruction, and I'm gonna ask John to speak to the impact on instruction and service delivery impacting both professional and support staff, if you could, John.
Thank you very much, Mark. I think that as an administrator in this district for, for a, a, a long period of time, I've, I've served in roles in the building as a former principal. And in a typical year, you'd see that the staff in front of you, that we sometimes move around and help support classrooms when we're down subs on a given day. Melissa just pointed out that we are down about thirty percent of subs on a given day right now. Where things may differ now to our past is we will combine classrooms. We would move classrooms to the cafeteria. We would sometimes split classrooms if we had to. We would sometimes utilize, you know, our specialists in a different way. All those things we would do, we could gather more. We are, we have safety protocols in place. We have a, a mask policy, we have restrictions on six feet. All those reasons and trying to avoid cross-contamination, we've had a different year to look at this year. We've utilized our library staff that forces a closed, reduced service, technology educators limit, limits their support for others, administrators eliminates them from their duties to oversee and work with emergencies and everything else in the building because they're covering classes. Unified arts staff reduces, reduces and eliminates what we can do across the building and for many students. Student interns have been used, practice teachers have been used. Para educators, reducing and limiting the services when they need to be, be in different roles. Language arts coordinators are often, they're usually the go-to and the first one to go in and cover a class because of their expertise in that class to try to keep continuation of going, but that limits them in their role in supporting all educators. Behavior specialists, again, you, you bring them into a class, you reduce what they can do throughout the building and help supporting the social and emotional needs of students. Counselors, very similar. When they're there, they reduce their ability to counsel and do the things they need to. Our special education teachers, our past teachers, they're all chipping in and doing what they can to support our classrooms. However, when they do that, they reduce the services they were hired to do. These are all high impacts on the operation of the building. When thirty percent of, of your staff, of your staff aren't covered during the day and you have no other option but to keep social distancing and keep them in the class, you're faced with a dilemma of sometime lessening services in other places. Nancy, can you go next slide? Mark, back to you.
So, so given what we've just shared, I want to remind everybody about what I said at the beginning and what I said back in October, which is that the scenario two, or the purple scenario, is intended to address issues that are either sudden or anticipated. And what I'm here to tell you tonight is that the change in our circumstances over the last two weeks, not in terms of in-school transmission of COVID, but on the impacts of COVID on our ability to function safely, completely, efficiently, have been dramatically impacted. And so this is like a wave that's coming. And the question is, do we wait for the wave to hit and then have to become red and then react quickly? Or if we see this coming, can we be planful and careful and, and meet the challenge? So our recommendation to the board for its consideration tonight is to transition to remote instruction pre-K through twelve, beginning on November thirty, twenty twenty. So let me just walk you through, you can read obviously as well as I, but I think it's important for me to walk you all through this. So on November twenty-third, that's this coming Monday, what we're recommending is that all Cohort A students attend school. And the reason for that is because we think it's very, very important, if we can pull this off, to make sure that our students have an opportunity to have closure with their teachers for the period of time that they would be remote. Likewise, on November twenty-fourth, which is a Tuesday, which would be typically a Cohort A day, we're recommending that all Cohort B students attend school on that day for that very same reason, so that they're able to just have closure for this period of time. Then we have Thanksgiving break. Then on November thirtieth and December first, that is right when we return back from Thanksgiving.
Mark on mute.
Okay, are you all able to hear me?
Now I can.
Yes.
Yes.
Are you able to? Yes, okay. So what we're recommending is that on November thirtieth and December first, all staff pre-K through twelve will, will need time to transition to their temporary remote instruction. That's gonna be very important. And on those two days, it would be no school for students. But on December second, all Cohort A students will return for remote instruction. That's a Wednesday, and on December third, all Cohort B students will return for remote instruction. And then on December seventh, we're gonna resume our schedule. And we anticipate a return to the hybrid model on January nineteen, twenty twenty-one. That's the day after Martin Luther King Day. So why that day? One of the things that we have learned is that the incubation period for COVID can be up to fourteen days. We also just have had additional information provided by the CDC and supported by New Hampshire DHHS that the holiday travel will likely cause a spike in transmission or, or just gathering. I'm going to, you know, carefully be with people, and I'm sure many of our, our family and friends will as well. But the likelihood, if we have seen a significant spike already, the likelihood of that spike increasing is something that I think we can anticipate. So we would need a couple of weeks after the holidays to let the impact of that sort of settle out. And then we hope to be able to determine where we sit and have every expectation that we'll be able to resume our remote instruction, I mean, our hybrid instruction, beginning on.
You're on mute again, Mark.
Okay, Nancy, you can advance, please. So I'm just, I'm going to ask John if he could speak to this slide. And before, before I do, I, I'm sure that people, some people listening will say benefits, how could there be a benefit? And I, I think that it's, it's important to, to talk about as much about what we're losing. You know, we've, we've talked a lot about that. But there is, there are certainly things that we can gain if we try and if we work hard to achieve it. And we're turning, trying mightily to turn lemons into lemonade here. And so there are genuine benefits of a temporary return to remote instruction, given our current model. And I wonder, John, if you could just speak just a little bit to that.
Certainly, Mark, thank you. I think that we have a number of students that are out right now, around a hundred and forty that are due to COVID reasons that are, that are home right now and really missing out on their, their direct instruction. So for those students, it would definitely increase consistency for students and increase the student contact time with teachers if we're in a remote, remote atmosphere. They would be able to go back to that. We would also be able to increase the ability for students absent due to COVID-related impacts to retain like that momentum, back into the mix, back into their students, back into their relationships with their, with their classmates. Decrease in students' absences due to COVID-related impacts. It wouldn't, you know, again, it would, it would impact that, that we wouldn't not no longer have to have kids out. We could maintain school and maintain for them during this time. Especially with where we are going through the holidays with a lot of social contact with family members and with other, other things happening. Discretion stat, staff absences due to COVID-related impacts. Again, Melissa talked a lot about this. We will have impacts due to other districts making choices to go out. Our staff will need to go out for childcare and for other COVID-related reasons. This will allow us to maintain our staff into a remote model and then anticipate the problem and plan for it in order to overcome it. It gives us an opportunity as a faculty and a, as a group to get together, talk about what we can do to our instructional model, how do we maintain it, how do we improve it, and how do we plan for it versus that emergency going out.
Thank you. Actually, Nancy, if you could just return to the previous slide for just a second. So I, I, I highlighted the three words, anticipate, plan, and overcome. So I don't know about all of you, but I, I am just about done being, you know, talking about all the things that, that COVID has taken. Nobody who's alive at the moment doesn't know that it's taken a lot from us. And that can get overwhelming. But what I, what I choose to do is to really work hard with our team as we have for so long and our families and our students to recognize that this is a challenge like we've never experienced before. And, and rather than lament that and continually talk about what we've lost, try to overcome it with anticipation and planning. And our teachers and leaders have done nothing but that for the last several weeks as we had, last several months from, from last March, that's all they do. But more recently, when we have seen this wave coming, I'm not the first to announce to you that we have a significant shift in COVID in our, in our region and nationally. So that's old news. But what we've been trying to do is to, since we've seen that, how do we overcome that? How do we responsibly deal with it in a way that can help us to resume our, our primary mission, which is to educate as well as we can? I fully recognize, as do all of our teachers and administrators, what's lost. And I'm here to tell you that there is a lot that can't be done about that right now. But what we can do is to try to anticipate, plan, and overcome. And I really just think it's important to make that point. That is all we've tried to do for these last many months. Nancy, if you could just advance to the end. So I, if you just allow me this opportunity, because I just feel like it's important to talk about something positive right now. So when I say gratitude and hope, I, I feel both. I, I truly do. It's easy to get down in the mouth about this. But I have incredible gratitude, and I've listed just, just a smattering of the people that I'm grateful for. But it's important to say it now. You know, there are those who'd say, you know, keep the message simple and just move it along. But there's a lot of heart and soul that's lost when you do that. So I want to just take a moment and talk directly to our students. They have been through more than any of us have ever been through. None of us right now, who are in positions of authority or whatever, have ever been a student during a time of a pandemic. Only our students have. And, and they have done tremendous, tremendous work. Yes, there have some who have not been able to manage this as well as they might. Yes, there are some who have significantly, you know, had, had significant problems as a result of the isolation and so on. But that does not characterize the majority of our students. The majority of our students have shined through this. They are working hard and succeeding. Our staff, I, I just can't say enough. I don't think anybody could possibly ask for a better staff than the staff that we employ in Merrimack. Our staff and administrators are selfless. They are selfless, they're dedicated. All they do every day is think about how they can improve the experience of students because they know how much this means to them. Our families, I am grateful for our families who have supported the mask policy, who've supported social distancing, who have sent messages of support in more numbers than I can count, to me, to our teachers and our administrators and staff, thanking them for the work they've done. To our volunteers who don't have any need to be in our schools, and though those numbers have reduced for obvious reasons, they're still there, and we have counted on them, helpers of all kinds. And the that gratitude is what gives me hope. So yes, we are in a tough time right now. There is no doubt about it. There is no easy way out of this. But I am very hopeful that by being careful right now and by planning carefully, we will really be able to come back in January and then hopefully, hopefully be able to segue out of this very difficult time into something that approximates normalcy, but we'll be ready for any challenge. And so that's how I choose to end tonight because I'm kind of tired of being feeling like this is, you know, we've we've talked enough about what's bad about this. That's all well and good. But there's a lot to be gained and I think that I'd like to end on that. So I'm sure you have a lot of questions and I'm happy to to answer as many as I can.
I stopped sharing.
Yes, yes, thanks.
Questions from the board?
Yes, Nancy, you can.
Shannon, and then Andy, and then Jenna, and then Lori.
My mute button jumped when we stopped sharing, sorry. So, Mark, when it comes down to it, I think, you know, it's definitely something I think you're considering under duress because really when I'm, when it comes down to, it's not as much the the quarantining itself or the cases that we're not spreading in the buildings. It's the staffing coverage and the the threat to not be able to get the talent in front of our students. That's really what this whole thing comes down to. At this, at this time.
That is exactly right. That is, that is exactly right. That's why, you know, I I tried to provide you with the data that I did. And as you say, it's it's just an important point to make again. Months ago, I would have thought that the reason we might have to shut down would be because of transmission in school, and we have avoided that. That is not the factor, but it is about staff and our ability of staff availability and our ability to maintain operations. It's 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 a wave that's coming. That is the fact, yes. Shannon, yes.
And to follow on that, and that's why I really wanted to kind of drill into this. So let's say the board decides we want to keep school open. And we keep school open and, you know, we're going to have substitutes. We're going to have kids in cafeterias because we won't have the teachers in the building. We're doubling down. So basically, we're getting compromised instruction by having the building open. Is is that the consequence if school stays open right now?
That is exactly right. And the slide that John spoke to tries to to speak to that. The the number of services that a school typically should deliver can't deliver at the moment because those people are increasingly deployed simply for coverage. And 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 so that's exactly accurate, what you said.
Gotcha. And the only other area that I know that we've had Heather Parker in a number of our meetings. So, you know, having services under her leadership, you know, knowing, you know, we're having students in the buildings in some cases was really the best way for them to get services delivered. You know, when we were remote in the spring, I think, you know, I I don't want to compare what we're going to do here to to that. I think a lot, we've come quite a long way. But that's an area of the student population that definitely needs a more tangible, you know, instruction. And John, you can absolutely speak to that as well. But just, I guess the question is, you know, we're definitely talking about, you know, mainstream instruction and how that would be compromised if we kept school open. What about the specialized instruction? And so if if school is closed?
So it's, yeah, thank you for that. It's an excellent question. So Heather and 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 the team have met frequently over the last week or so as we've begun to see these significant increases on of impacts on our operations. And Heather is at the moment developing a plan for student identified students because she absolutely recognizes that there are there is a population of students who really can only benefit from live one-to-one instruction. And and so or in 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 school instruction. So I'm not prepared to specifically address that plan at the moment because it would be, you know, inappropriate to do that if I can't tell you exactly. But that is going to evolve, has already been in development and is going to evolve quickly over the next few days. But we recognize that challenge, yes.
Gotcha. And and I think even as the days gone on, we as a board have been getting emails from parents and I do remember seeing that being addressed with with some of those communications. So so with that, you know, I think, you know, we may not be able to address it in tonight's call. And of course, you know, that's something that we're Heather having to lead that charge, we probably want to speak to it. But something we're definitely want to talk to at our next meeting regardless of of where this goes. But those are the questions I had. And I, you know, I yield to other board members at this point.
Andy?
So first, an observation is sort of follow on to Shannon's original or initial comment where she discussed that it's really a staffing issue. I mean, you you made it clear that this isn't a fact that we're not doing a good job in the building with with parents following the rules and students following the rules and things. So we can, we can quote all the studies we want about the value of kids in school. I don't think the kids are the the issue at all, as you said, you know, a lot of good, good things there. But to me, the observation is is that the issue with staffs, staffing, and in particular, the fact that a lot of our staff reside in these towns and cities where they have already made decisions to go remote, mean that the the impact to our staff and its ability to do in-person learning gets reduced with every decision that's made by district. It's sort of a domino effect, if you will, around the different, these districts making these decisions. So for me, the, you know, today you you listed Londonderry and 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 Milford as two districts that have decided to go remote. Tomorrow, there'd be two others. We could make a decision. So it's like, it's this cascading effect that's impacting staffing more than it is impact with students. So that's my takeaway from what you said and and sort of what I'm hearing. But I think the more important part is is that I think there's a lot of fear and as as Shannon mentioned, we have gotten a lot of input from parents. There's a lot of concern that when we do go remote, if we do make that decision, that the way that we deliver instruction in a remote fashion has to be more aggressive than it has been in the past. I think that what I'm hearing and and my my thoughts are, and I, you know, I've talked about this in other board meetings about making the remote students not be not not have a a to to make sure they have an impactful set of studies and instruction. So I'm I'm hoping that these days when you're going to retool at the very beginning of November, end of November, beginning of December, will have a change in the way that we do things. It's not just a cohort A cohort B doing the same amount of, you know, a couple hours a day or whatever, but it is more involved instruction more frequently if possible to to really change what it's going to be like between the beginning of November and then through mid-January. So that students that are all remote are going to get a more a good hands-on experience and not just a, you know, short time a day with a couple Zoom things and then a lot of other work. I'd like to see an aggressive approach with a lot more direct instruction happening in that remote. Let's take advantage of the fact that everybody's remote and let's make it more efficient if we can do that. So this, that's my desire because there's a lot of stress with parents that's saying, oh, God, I'm going to have to have my kids home again. So let's make it a, not only better than last spring, but let's really break out in terms of the experience. Let's really get a lot of Zoom involved with with instruction or or whatever makes sense, more face-to-face, more the two cohorts maybe together is possible. I don't know what's possible, but I really challenge the district to figure out a way to make that happen should we decide to go remote.
Thank you. John, I wonder if you could speak to that just a little bit.
I'd like to. Thank you. And Andy, I accept your challenge. Thank you. I I think that. Mark, did you? Am I clear? Thank you. I lost. So, no, I accept that, Andy. Thank you. And I think that, you know, pending tonight's outcome, we're ready to meet and talk about all those things. I think that, you know, this is, as you see, a very recent development and we're trying to, again, move into that purple zone and be proactive here. So part of that being proactive is looking at all those things you mentioned, Andy. Thank you. It was a good rendering. And I think we will look at the cohort model. We will look at direct instruction. We will look at the capacity of Zoom. We'll look at the capacity of how to interact more with our kids. I said it to our leadership team when we start, when we talked to them yesterday. I I I don't want to go backwards to the spring. I want to move forward to controlling education as we have in Merrimack, offering a good program and enhancing our program. And that that's what our efforts will be geared towards as we move forward in into into this next phase if we choose to go, if if this is the will of the board to go there.
Any other questions, Andy?
For now.
Okay, then it's Jenna and then Lori.
Okay. So Andy, you said a lot of what exactly I was going to say. I I do agree with you that more direct instruction is the way to go and and, you know, even looking at the cohort model and seeing if if we can use this time as a benefit and instead of a drawback, kind of just, you know, what you're saying is, okay, we don't have to do social distancing now. Maybe kids don't need to be in this cohort model. Maybe we can provide direct instruction four days a week instead of two. I think that's something that people want you to consider. And I hope that you will, and it sounds like you're going to. So I won't beat that up anymore. I'll just add my voice in saying I agree with Andy. And if we can look at maximizing this time instead of it being a drawback, that would is what people are looking for. So I'm going to ask a question that's going to be on the minds of a lot of parents. I think that doesn't have to do as much with education, but has to do with sports. What does this mean for sports? We just decided sports would go forward and we just told wrestling they couldn't go forward. And part of the reason, in my mind, I mean, the wrestlers want to wrestle, right? So maybe they can have that risk now since they're not going to be coming into our schools. Let them assume that risk. Since other schools, other Division One sports are letting wrestling go forward, maybe we can let them go forward. What does it mean for sports in general? If the school goes remote, just do sports still go forward? I'm just asking that because I have a feeling that's going to be on the minds of a lot of people watching. And I know that that's not the most important thing and it's not necessarily what we're here to talk about tonight because education is. This goes hand in hand with that and there's kids experience. And I think people are going to want to know what that means for sports.
So Jenna, I I appreciate the way you prefaced it, which is that there there might need to be a follow-up to that. You know, things are developing very quickly, really fast, and I I can't answer that question right now. You know, all I can say is that we've tried very hard to maintain, you know, experiences as as much as we can, you know, given the challenges that we face. And sports is certainly one of them. So, you know, we've never, again, we've literally never been in this situation before. So I don't know entirely what the impact is. I think you you heard the other night when we were talking about sports that there are some sports that are in limbo merely because we have no venue for them to be played. We also are in a situation where other districts haven't made decisions themselves about sports. And so we're in for almost all our sports, but we're not entirely sure who we even have to play. That depends on the decisions made by, you know, other other people in other places. So your question is a really good one. And all I would tell you is that this is like so many things. This is a puzzle and the pieces are just beginning to fall into place. But if the question is, are we mindful of that and trying, the answer is absolutely yes. And certainly, as we have, you know, more information about that, we'll provide it. One hundred percent true. It is not lost on us that that's an important thing to bear in mind.
Yeah, and I think I think I'll just end by saying with taking the so, the the small bit of socialization that kids have away from them, if the reason we're pulling the plug on in-person school is because of staffing and not because of COVID transmission, then I, it seems to me that sports would still be able to go forward and allow kids that one bit of outlet and connection and humanity as opposed to this screen thing that we all hate. Right? And so my encouragement would be to let that go forward if there's any way at all for that to be possible. Because it doesn't seem like we'll probably, we probably won't have a staffing problem with substitutes.
We, so, you know, so the board has already made that decision to allow it to go forward. And so again, that that that, that was a district's recommend, the administration's recommendation, and the board accepted that recommendation. So that's, that's already, you know, been done. The the questions really are, you know, what's what's feasible in the days to come. It won't be because we haven't already made the commitment to do it. We've already made that commitment to do it. The question is, what's possible to do, given some unknowns that are out of our control? But I mean, if there's any doubt in the community as to our commitment to it, that I hope was alleviated. The other day, if I could, if I could just just make one small comment. Frequently, I I I hear people talk about our taking things away. And and, you know, I'm an English major, right? So words matter to me. So I just want to comment on that. The idea of taking things away, it kind of connotes that, like, we have a choice and we're choosing to to, you know, remove things from students. And and that matters to me a lot because nothing could be further from the truth. When when the, when COVID hit, it took things away. We, as educators in every district in the country, have been trying to restore normalcy. We're not trying to take things away from people. But in the meantime, while that's happening, there are certain effects and impacts that COVID has had that's causing certain things to not happen anymore because of safety or because of trying to be a community partner and not be a contributor to to spread or to whatever. And so, you know, it's a small point, but it's one that I'm actually increasingly sensitive to because the 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 language implies that, like, we have a choice and we're choosing to to do that. There isn't a person I know who's choosing any of this. But we've been dealt a hand, set a hand of cards and we're doing the best we can with that hand. So it's just a small point, but I I just felt like I needed to just try to
Well, and let me clarify. I didn't not, I didn't mean that you're, I think you're taking things away. I understand, and I think most people understand that it is the situation. But as parents, I think we want to be able to cling to any bit of normalcy we can during this time. And for kids that play sports or theater or whatever, anything that we can let go on, we should. And and I, as a parent, I will say that I don't, even as a board member, I didn't, I I couldn't answer people when they asked me, does this mean that if we were to go remote, would would the, what would be the impact on sports? And I didn't know for sure that if, you know, if we went remote, would sports still go forward? So I'm glad that in whatever capacity it can functionally go forward with the NHI and all that, it will go forward. I think people want to be reassured of that. So I'm grateful for that. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Lori?
Okay, so I just want to start by saying in August, when we were talking about reopening our schools, we took a lot of community measures. We did testing, contract tracing, quarantining, mask usage, shields. The school district had resources and policies. We discussed the importance of hygiene, ventilation, and environmental cleaning. And so our schools opened and our schools opened highly successfully. And we understand now there's been a change. And Dr. Chan said that there is an increased number of new cases. And the fourteen-day rate of infections have gone from what, you know, one hundred and seventy-eight per hundred thousand people. And so as far as test positivity rate, we're at medium. So we understand that our communities have to be aware that we cannot be COVID fatigued and we can't let our guard down. However, for me, the last-case scenario that I would like to see is that our schools close down and go remote. And, you know, Doc, Governor Sununu recently was asked about shutdowns. And he said that he did not really see the need to shut down right now. And closing our schools, in my opinion, would be a very aggressive restriction. And so I I've heard everything would, you know, people have said, and I understand on, you know, March thirteenth, it was the right thing to do. We shut down our schools. We did not have the data. We did not have testing. We did not have testing sites. We did not have protocols. We did not have contact tracing. We have all of that now. But we also understand the negative impact of isolation. But we also understand the negative impact of isolation, mental health. Loss of social emotional well-being, not to mention the educational deficiencies that are profound. Educators are, have real concerns about these kids who don't have enough food. There's worries about substance abuse, about their needs not being met. And so. I think these issues are dr- drastic and they cannot be understated. Um, I understand that the superintendent has concerns. My suggestion would be we close schools until December fourteenth. And that way we can reopen schools, check on our children, come back to schools for a couple weeks. With in-person learning. Um, and then prepare for the break. Uh, another concern that we've discussed tonight is special education. And our special education population. They are negatively affected by, the research shows, by remote learning. And I know that there's plans in place and I'm interested to hear what they are. Um, I think that all of our students. Um, need to be in school as much as possible. And, you know, if we have to be innovative. And we have to be creative and we have to maybe have a cohort go on Friday. But I I just, you know, to shut down schools for eight weeks, I'm absolutely opposed.
Any other questions from the board? Okay, um, so I have a couple of comments. Many of um the questions and concerns that I had, oh, Shannon?
It was Andy raising his hand.
Never mind, go go ahead, Cindy.
No, go ahead, Andy. That's all right, go on.
Well, no, 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 I wa- I wanted to sort of feedback to Lori a little bit. So I I I actually ran this scenario when we were preparing for the meeting. If we go back on the fourteenth, the students are gonna be back for five, six, seven, seven or eight calendar days, depending on which day we decide to take the break. I can't remember what the calendar says. Um, what we don't know, and and while I certainly support the idea of needing uh students in school. What I don't think we know is the situation of staff and the ability to fulfill those in-person needs on that date. Um, and my concern is, is that when we come back to the fourteenth, will we not have enough staff to be able to have school in place? There's that risk. And would we be better served to prepare for a more robust experience through the eight weeks versus go out for two weeks? Then regroup for in-person for seven days and then go back out for two more weeks beyond that remote. I mean, it's, that's a challenge. I understand the value of being in person. But it's that only seven days back before we might go out for another break plus two weeks that concerns me a little bit. So it's, it's. I understand where you're coming from, and some schools have chosen that. Like, I believe Hudson, Alveron and stuff is taking that current approach, although they're gonna evaluate it after the break. So they could come back after the break in early December and say, oh, oh shoot, there's not enough people to go, so we're then gonna go remote the rest of the time. So the question becomes. Do we be planful and make a better experience for the whole time they're out? Or be out for two weeks, hope we can come back. Discover whether we can or can't, and then be out for another two weeks after the break. So that's the challenge, I think.
Um, I have a question. Um, at the beginning of the presentation, um. Melissa was explaining some of the deficits around our substitute teachers. And if I recall correctly, it was seventy percent are being filled this year. Is that correct? What happens with those thirty percent? The thirty percent of those where we can get a substitute teacher? Can you describe? What happens in our schools with that, John?
Well, before, before John jumps in, uh let me just uh uh put you, uh, bring you back to the. Uh, slide that John was speaking to, and then I would like John to speak to it. But um, we talked about the impact is. When you don't have subs, you have to take uh other people from the building who perform other roles. And put them in that coverage role, which means there's a domino effect. And what that means is that then the services that they typically provide, they can't provide. So let's say that you are forced because of your need for coverage to use a para educator to cover a class. Um, the para educator, for the time being, couldn't be in service of the students that they're needing. That doesn't happen very often because that's a last resort, but it increasingly becomes necessary to have to consider that. Uh, or maybe you have a lib- library, librarian or a library assistant, in which case the library has to shut down for a period of time. So that uh a, the the coverage can happen. And as much as those people are fantastic. They have a different job than a classroom teacher. So then the question becomes, what's the ability to provide a quality education? In those content, in the, in that setting. Um, and there's no critique of anybody who does coverage, thank goodness for them, but it's a different experience. Um, so that page that John was describing helps to describe what happens in those cases. Plus also the fact that whereas in the past you might be able to uh bring students into. You know, a larger space, which used to happen, but now uh because of social distancing requirements, uh particularly with younger students who. Really need to move around, uh that makes that harder and harder. So that's just my contribution to that question, but I'm sure, John, you have uh. Having been a former principal, you've got uh even uh additional thoughts about that.
Well, Mark, I do cover a lot of it. Uh, thank you. Um, I think that I would, only thing that I would add is, is again, I I wanna remind people, we have. Cohorts for a reason. We have smaller classes. We have students spread out with six feet. All of those um are restrictions that are based because of COVID. Again, it's COVID that's causing this. And we can't, we can't combine classes like we've done in years past. We can't do some of the things that we may have done within the schools to. Move kids to the cafeteria for a period of time, move kids to other places, uh split up kids. We can't do those things. So we're faced with. Um, thirty percent deficit in the day and having to use our, many of the roles Mark described, including our. Um, language arts coordinators, um, you know, sometimes our our tech, our our um, our computer technology teachers, other people that. Sometimes cover, which leaves them out of a supporting role in that building. And many times our administrators, many times. This year, our administrators are covering classes and being in classrooms cuz that's where they need to be to keep um, to keep education going the best they can. And to keep kids socially distanced and safe.
Um, Jenna?
So, um, you know, I I just wanted to comment also back to what Lori had said. I mean, Lori, I can't. Uh, agree with you more in your sentiments at all. Like, I think we all want our kids in school. I think we all completely want our kids in school. I don't think there's. Anybody on this board, on this Zoom call or in this town doesn't want that. However, a couple of things you said. When Governor Sununu was saying he can't imagine a scenario in which this would be the case, I wish he was on this Zoom call, actually. To hear the staffing issues, right? So I think he's talking about this purely from a virus transmission point. So when he said that, my first thought was, okay, you know what, but then my next thought was, well, geez. Our problem actually happens to be something else. You've been a building administrator, Lori. What do you s- how do we solve the problem of the, of the lack of staffing? We have a a a staffing issue. The the problem is staffing, which affects sa- safety of students. It affects. Um, it it affects the the quality of education. It affects all of those things. So I totally hear what you're saying. And I appreciate it deeply, I do. However, I I really am concerned that. It, my ki- I'm actually concerned that my kids in education might be impacted if they have a substitute, if they have a para standing in for a teacher who's, you know what I mean, like. I believe that the numbers in the staffing problem that's being presented, we're not pulling our kids out because we're afraid of this virus or the transmission in the schools. We're saying, what we've said is that we're doing a great job. But uh, you know, I I appreciate hearing what you're saying, but uh truly, I'd like to understand, how do you think we should solve the staffing problem that's causing us to have this conversation? Just as a, as a, as a discussion. Do you know what I'm saying? Like, I can't hear you though.
Um, so, so one of the things that um in the school district I work for is they created a matrix so we would know. Um, you know, what was going on, what teachers were available at what period of time. And um. And and we, you know, we do have substitute teachers and 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 I don't know, I, you know, a lot of the absences, when we look at the absences. It's, it's, it's a person who's being absent. So I think it's like, you know, tha- that's what I think. It's not a hundred and sixteen pe- people. It's. That's how many days because someone's quarantined for fourteen days. Um, you know, I I just. I just believe that this is a problem that we have to solve, but we can do it creatively. I mean, you can, you could, you could open up Fridays. And 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 teachers could come in and teach those as you could rotate. There could be things to do to keep kids in school. My number one priority. Is kids. My number one priority is keeping them in school.
Maybe you need to be on the sub list. Maybe I need to be on the sub list.
I work at a different school.
Just teasing.
Any other questions? Uh, Shannon?
Yeah, um, I I would have to say that when it comes to kids being in school or, you know, at the expense of the quality of education. You know, at the end of the day, that we're asking them to move forward and, you know, I think we keep hearing kids are falling behind. If they're not getting quality instruction. Um, I do think that we've done a lot with social emotional learning and even in. Remote environments and and in the hybrid environments, trying to address this, the um. The coping mechanisms that our students are are needing to thrive in this environment. Um, we're definitely not working the vacuum um when it comes to all of this, but again, you know, we are. If we don't have the team in place to do the job because they can't be in the buildings, but they could do the job. If they weren't required to be in the buildings, then, you know, are the compromises too great? Um, to to keep them in school for the sake of having the school open and and the interaction physically. But not getting the instruction that they need. Um, so again, you're right, you know, they would have the social emotional, maybe a little bit better covered. But at the expense of uh falling behind on those uh curriculum standards that they're being held to, whether they're full remote or whether they're hybrid. They're being held to those same curriculum standards, but now we actually can't deliver them. Where we always, we're talking in our meetings about not being able to deliver them to remote, but we are actually delivering them to remote with the uh, the real program. But now we won't be able to deliver them to the kids in school because they can't be there. So, you know, the teachers can't be there to deliver that instruction, to give them the same equity. So the one, you know, there could actually be a potential inequity if we keep schools open, but don't have the teachers. We have substitutes in. Um, and people in roles that weren't designed to deliver instruction, honestly. So, you know, I st- I, my concern is we keep talking about making sure that there's parity and equity in all the different learning environments. And actually, the hybrid will become the, will become an inequity because we don't have the the uh staff that needs to be there to deliver that destruction. So. I I'm very concerned if if we do lose that staff, as we're hearing, we might because of um, you know, the federal guidelines that allow them to. You know, be remote because they don't, you know, because of care, um, family care. So with that, um, it it's, this is not an easy decision. What we have to deal with tonight is not an easy decision and not one that was taken lightly before the meeting was called. I think that that was, you know. Evident in the PowerPoints that we had, you know, the, all the different circumstances and what we're dealing with. So as we're going forth, I think that. You know, when we talk about equity amongst the learning groups, that has to definitely um ta- take a a strong position. So. That's, that's something I just wanted to bring up.
So, uh, you know, not to disclose too much, but this, the district that I am in is fully remote. And I was in a meeting today with the administrators on the F-list, which is. Uh, astronomical. It's up twenty-five percent. Uh, these kids are falling behind. They're falling through the cracks. And uh, it's not working. It's not working. So we have to figure out how to get these kids in school. That's the bottom line.
Um, just to counter to that, I think that, you know, all schools are different. Um, I think Merrimack definitely. Has taken steps in some areas that might be ahead of the curve, especially when it comes to social emotional. So that these kids are better coping in whatever environment in which they are expected to learn. UDL, we were way ahead of the curve on that. Uh, although Edelblue is rolling it out to the state now, as of this year, we've been doing it year four now. So I wouldn't, I wouldn't put another district next to ours and say that because it's failing there, it could, it it's destined to fail here. I think we've taken a lot of, a lot of preventative steps without even knowing a a pandemic was coming. To to create um a dynamic learning environment, so.
I know.
So, yeah, I I agree with you, Shannon. And here, here's the other thing. I think that I, I, again. I want my kids back in in school. I love that my kids are in two days a week. I want them to be in school as much as possible for as long as possible. However. Twice in the last month, my son has texted me from school and said, I don't have a teacher. I'm in a CAF study. And I say, what does that mean? And he says, I have no work, right? Because the teacher just wasn't there that day, sick, whatever, legitimate reasons. This is no criticism on the teacher. These things happen, but there was, they're high school students. So CAF study means I'm in with somebody who's. You know, standing there. I don't wanna use the word babysitting, but that's what it feels like, standing there while my kid plays on his phone for an hour and a half cuz it's a block class. Right? We're doing that, okay, that wouldn't happen if that teacher could, with their sniffle. That isn't COVID, but had to stay home because of it, could teach the class, right? So we're in this situation. And my child could have a better quality education if we were remote than he can in person. And so I, while I want to die on the hill of all, make sure our kids are in school, I have that track playing in my head, like. You know, I, maybe this is not a hill I wanna die on because um, I'd like my kid to have his class and have his teacher and actually learn something as opposed to then what hap-. Happens is he gets home at the end of that day and gets an email from the teacher, here, do this work. Well, that's great, but that didn't happen during the CAF study. And again, no fault on the teacher. This is not a criticism of those teachers. And I followed up. Those teachers have done a great job communicating what should happen. But there's learn, learning lost time, whereas if we could go remote for a period of time and hoping, hoping to resolve these staffing issues. And, you know, and shore up the quality of our education, we can get back in January much stronger. But that, all that said, we do need to work on shoring up our staffing issues over these eight weeks as well, right? It can't be a just, hey, we're gonna do this thing. And we're gonna come back on January nineteenth and have the same problems, right? So it's a both and. We're gonna go remote. We're gonna make our remote teaching the best it can be. We're gonna do the best. To maximize education, but we're also going to try to solve these problems. So we come back in January and we don't have to have these conversations again. If we can avoid it. But anyway, that's my two cents.
Andy?
So, we're, I, I I can't speak for the whole board, but I'm going under assumption. That if we do ta- choose to go remote and administration has some breakthrough, kick butt ideas to improve the education. That we will have adequate staff working remotely to be able to fulfill that teaching obligation. Is that a valid assumption? Because if the, like the domino effect that I described of teachers being at home because their children are at home. Will these teachers be able to commit to instructing during the day while they're doing other things with families, sort of like the stu- same challenge that some of our parents have to deal with? So I guess that's sort of my question is, if if we go this route, are we gonna get what I'm expecting anyway to be there? So I can, I'll, I'll defer to Melissa in a minute, but Andy, I'll tell you, we're doing that now. There are, there are teachers now, les, as um. As uh, uh, has been alluded to before. Um, you know, Nashua and Manchester have been remote for a while, and we have a lot of teachers who live in Nashua and Manchester. Who were allowed to uh teach remotely. Um, otherwise, they would have to be on leave and we wouldn't have them at all, but we've been able to teach them remotely. So when we're talking about being innovative. Um, you know, we literally created schedules based on teacher need because let's not forget, teachers have a right to their needs being met as well. And and so we uh delayed our final schedule.
And and so we uh delayed our final schedule in the summer just so that we could understand what teacher impacts there would be uh by uh and what student impacts there would be, and we crafted a schedule like that. So absolutely, this will uh i- i- improve that possibility. But the other thing I want to say is that um what's the wild card is, you know, who among any of us um might uh, you know, contract this thing? Uh, one of the things that I've heard from our nurses more recently is that more and more families who are reporting um illness are uh saying that they really don't know where it came from. They weren't here or there, or they didn't go to a gathering and so on. So um, so we have to have a healthy staff in order to do anything. So your assumption is is accurate to the extent that if people stay healthy and go remote, we'll be able to use them. But um as cases increase, um and the likelihood of transmission increases, we have not had transmission yet, and I, I don't know that we ever will, but we also haven't had these numbers before. Um, and so it's predicated on our teachers staying, staying well. And I know that they are working mightily to do that. They've sacrificed an awful lot so that they can, you know, be well and be ready for our students. And and just like in the community, things happen to teachers and their families and extended families as well. Melissa, I don't know if you wanna add any uh color to that, but uh
So, I would agree a hundred percent. And what we found at the start of the school year, our staff want to work. So when other districts made the decision to start remote, they had the opportunity. They had FF-CRA, Families First Coronavirus Response Act. They basically could get paid to be out on leave, but they wanted to work. So we have been able to accommodate most of those people with children in districts like Manchester and Nashua that are remote. And this would alleviate that, the sudden switch from other districts going remote. Most of the staff continue, they would want to work remote if they needed to. Another challenge, the FF-CRA, Families First Coronavirus Response Act, as of right now, it expires December thirty first. So that pay would run out for those people that need it for districts shifting through January eighteenth. So that would alleviate that as well. Uh, so we can't predict with a hundred percent certainty, but from what we've seen at the beginning of the school year, staff want to work as long as they can remote. It's just not always available to them if we're in person.
Any other questions? Okay, so I have a couple of additional comments. Um, first and foremost, if we are to go and choose to be remote um for any period of time, I would very much need to see that students, there's some, you know, the combining of cohorts, for example, you know, can we, I would absolutely make that a requirement, um, that children at least can get additional instruction time with their teacher, because at least in the older grades, maybe it might be more difficult to have a large group remotely for the younger grades. I don't know. But at least in some way, shape or form, have that. I'd also like to see us, where we need to put in some other interventions. You know, how do we use Fridays? You know, could we, you know, could we make some live study groups with some of the personnel that we have? You know, folk, you know, kids that are falling behind in their assignments and really struggling with those exec- executive functioning skills um that need help with organization or um some small, smaller group Zoom meetings, and I know we're doing some of that already, but um, and then of course, just across the board, from our student services, how we're supporting, supporting those kids in this type of instruction, you know, that need it the most, and how we're challenging those kids that need the challenge too. They have their own set of challenges. And and that's really important thing that sometimes easy to get lost on us, is those kids that need the extra instruction. They need to be extremely challenged, and that's a very similar situation than those that have some other unique needs, as we all know. So I would absolutely need to see that we have an increase in live and, or live instruction in the sense of remote live instruction, you know, Zoom or, you know, some other benefits of ways that we can engage our kids. I, I'll be honest, this is nothing against the recommendation or anything. This is, I think we all feel this way. I hate this. I hate this for the kids of this community. I hate it for the community. I hate it for my own children. It's really awful. I mean, I, there's, I, you know, there's very few good things about this that that um other than maybe developing some different skill sets, some soft skills, coping mechanisms, survival, I don't know, whatever have you. But this isn't going away for a while. And so we have to get better. We have to continue to take what we're learning and make it better. And, you know, I was in a class today, a personal class that I'm taking, and um the instructor was doing a live uh presentation for those that were there live, like myself. At the same time, there was a cohort of remote people um that were attending. Now, I'm an adult. You know, it was, it was teaching to adults, but I still think that there's a way to get that sense of live instruction, even in a remote environment, um, and whatever those resources are, you know, to help to kind of bring things along, because I, I do think that, honestly, okay, maybe there's a vaccine, but you know, I think we all want this to go away. We, you know, last April, you know, we kind of had this hope that it would just kind of be a blip in the road. But it's not, it's not a blip in the road. And I think, you know, for a while, some families are gonna be very nervous and some staff are gonna be very nervous and very susceptible and very vulnerable um to the impacts of COVID. So we have to be better. Um, I also need more data. So now that we've got a quarter under our belt, I'd really like to see a cohort by cohort comparison. You know, what, after, you know, first quarter last year, what is the same cohort doing after first quarter this year? How many have dropped, are the grades dropping? Where are the failure rates? I think Lori brought up the failure rates earlier. Where are our kids failing? What do we have going on in high school? What are the interventions that we're doing? Um, how are we keeping our kids from failing? Um, and there's other impacts too. And there's the social impacts, you know, um, the abilities to get into colleges. I mean, there's just all of these things that parents are worried about, and rightfully so. Um, so, you know, I, I like the idea, you know, at at a, at a first thought of being able to reduce the time. I mean, we have a constraint. It's a, it's a constraint, a staffing constraint that's very real. I get it. Um, you know, and I wish I had a magic wand, but that wasn't the case. You know, that would certainly make everybody's life easier, because I do think that we've done this um, we've done well containing the spread within our schools through a little bit of a whack-a-mole approach of, you know, it's some kids out, getting tested, come back in, stop the school, start the school, quarantine the sports team, let them back in. It's, it's whack-a-mole, really. But it, it has been working. So, you know, I commend everyone that's worked towards that, and certainly all of the parents and kids that have had the inconvenience. I've been one too of, I, I might be a frequent flyer, so to speak, at the uh convenient MD um for my family, and I only have two kids. But we've had strep throat, we've had the sniffles, I mean, we've had everything but COVID, but, you know, we've been there. So I think we all relate to that. Um, I like the idea of, you know, perhaps at at first thought of maybe going two weeks after Thanksgiving, see if we can get our staffing stuff figured out. Maybe give families some hope that we could come back, do a mental health check-in with our kids. Um, but I also don't know the impact of starting stopping. You know, kids aren't always, you know, it's, you know, I think a lot of teachers that I know will say, like, after Christmas break, it's hard for kids to get back into the swing of things, and then you know, if if we bring them in and then send them back again, you know, what does that do? I don't, I don't like that thought either. So I'm just really back to, you know, um really frustrated about a decision that I'm gonna have to make, that I, I I don't see a lot of creative approaches to, and I certainly recognize that we can't just make staffing come out of the air. So here I am, you know, trying to decide, so, you know, are there, I guess I would like to ask rather than make my own assumptions about and hear from the folks, Mark and John, you know, particularly, what would be the negative impact if we were to come back, or at least see if we have the staffing situation maybe in a better place two weeks after Thanksgiving, to do a check-in until, let's say, around, you know, the, the Christmas time season or the, the December holidays.
So, um there's a lot to cover here. So as is always the case, you know, we're doing our best to give the board information that we have as we're experiencing, experiencing it. And then when the board makes a decision, we will do all that we can to support it. So that's number one. Uh, when you, when you ask the question, uh, what would be the negative impacts of uh coming back two weeks after Thanksgiving, I, I'm not being uh, you know, facetious when I tell you, I don't know what tomorrow is gonna be like. That's, that's the experience of, of living in a school right now. So, um, part of the reason that we uh brought to you back in October twenty eighth, the purple scenario mode was because if we can anticipate a problem, it's, it's good to do it. I think it's, I think it's not as responsible to hope for things to go away when all the evidence is pointing in another direction. So if you ask, what will it be like uh two weeks, uh, you know, uh, after Thanksgiving? I, I couldn't predict it. What I, what I can tell you is that the data is suggesting that if we're having the staffing challenges that we're having now, why would it get better the deeper we go into December and the holiday season? Now, we can certainly take that, take that decision and we will make it work. But the likelihood increases that I will have to come to you and say that we are now in red mode um for any number of reasons. Um, and, and then all the things that we're wanting to avoid will be hitting smack in the face and we won't be able to do much about it, because we'll have to make that change very quickly. So, um, that's, that's my best answer for you. Um, I, I cannot get into the prediction game right now, because it's just impossible to do it. All I can do is look at our experience, living in the schools every day as we do, and trying to extrapolate from that to the future. And uh, and that's why we're here tonight. I mean, it's not easy for me to be here tonight either. Uh, for those of you who said you hate this, you know, I've been superintendent a year and a half, and almost a year of this uh, uh, has been pandemic. Uh, it's been horrible uh to see the impact on, on uh, on students and on teachers, my own children. Um, so, you know, this, uh, this is not an easy thing. And trust me, it would be easier to avoid this and not come to you tonight and just keep my fingers crossed and hope for the best, but this board has asked us to uh be transparent about its challenges and to, and report them. And so that's what I'm, what we're trying to do tonight. So, um, so that's my best answer for that. Um, I, I just do also want to comment, because I don't, I don't, I, I am sure it's not intended, but if I'm a teacher listening tonight, I, I just have to say that I'm hearing a lot about we have to do better, we have to improve. And, and, and I wanna just, I just wanna say this. This is the motto in the Merrimack School District. It has been the motto since March Chaffrey, and it continues to be the motto here. We do not rest in our laurels. We are all about innovation. We are all about trying to improve our instruction. Uh, we, and, and so if the question about we have to do better, we have to improve is in that spirit of constantly trying to do better and improve, I completely agree. But if the question is, have our teachers in some way been subpar through this? Um, and I'm not suggesting that that's the implication, but I, I just, I wanna just really say that I cannot ask more of our teachers than they've given us. And um, and every single time that they have been challenged with uh addressing something, they have, they have done it. Now, um, for many students, I'm sure it has not worked uh perfectly. I'm not going to sit here tonight and tell you it's been uh great for everybody. It hasn't been great for my child in Nashua at all. He's a senior who's lost half of his junior year and now all of his senior year. He hasn't had a chance to be remote. I mean, to be hybrid for even a couple of weeks. I'm not critical of Nashua for that, but that's the fact. So I understand everything about the COVID impacts. Um, but I also believe that his teachers are working as hard as they can, and so are ours. And the other thing I would say is, when we talk about innovation, I believe we're among the only districts, if not the only district in New Hampshire, uh, at least in the South Central reason, region, that has appointed a uh, remote instruction coordinator specifically to address the challenges of remote instruction. And this board approved a system of care coordinator to specifically deal with mental health issues. Um, and uh, that is just one of, of very few in the state. So I think the board should be, you know, proud of everything that it's done, and our teachers um, really have, have tried to. And I, I say that just because, you know, this is getting really real now in terms of, you know, impacts, and none of this is easy. But our teachers, you know, we're talking about healthcare heroes and so on. Our teachers are heroes too. And I, I know we all know that, but I just, I wanna verbalize that tonight, because that's, that's really important to, to just put on the table.
So, oh, go ahead.
As far as your question about um, uh, two weeks after Thanksgiving, I'll do my best to, if that's what the decision of the district is, we'll certainly do it. I just can't predict to you what that outcome will be.
No, thanks. And I want to clarify my comments. When I say we have to do better, that is in no way am I referring to our teachers. And I, I collectively, I guess we all have to, you know, be open-minded about and creative, absolutely, you know, and I think the examples that I gave um, were around, you know, can we use Fridays better? Can we bring in and do some tutoring classes or, you know, for kids? That, that's literally about trying to find a way to come to our kids and find a way to make them successful. I mean, that is not due to our teachers that are working tirelessly, who I appreciate so very much, and the impact that they've had in all of our kids, um, mine included, and what they do every day and how they're trying to juggle this whole situation. I think we spoke about that at our, our last meeting, um, or our last special meeting. Um, we spent some time talking about what teachers are doing, but it's about being able to create interventions. It's about, you know, being able to meet, meet these kids that maybe, you know, have, don't learn very well um remotely. You know, I, I have, you know, and I, I don't spend a lot of time talking about my kids when we're in these meetings, but I can certainly use it as an example. I have one that absolutely does not thrive unless he's in class, and it's really challenging. And it's a matter of, and it's not his fault, it's not the teacher's fault. Um, and it's not our fault under the conditions that we have, but it's a matter of, you know, how we continue to improve and be creative and try to find a way to meet these kids. And I just throw that out there because it's important to me. It's, and I think it's important to you too, and that's why we've done things and that's why you brought things to us, which is along those lines. But there's still more we can do. You know, we always have to strive to be better. So, um, I just wanted to clarify that. I was in no way trying to insult anyone.
No, no, I know that. No, 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 not at all, not at all. Uh, I just, um, I, I just think every time we have an opportunity to, you know, uh, to verbalize the, for the teachers, it's, it's good to do it. But no, this board has been fantastic in support of its teachers, for sure. I, I just want to know, uh, if John, uh, because you have been literally leading some uh efforts around some of the very things that Cindy's been talking about. And so I wonder if you could just give a preview. I know it's early to announce certain things, but if you could just give a preview of some of the things you've been uh, working on?
I'll say, Mark, I'm not, I'm not really at a place yet to preview, because it's actually one discussion, so that's nowhere to preview too. But I can talk about a few things that you just addressed. One
Real quick. So what I could say is just plan for our next school board meeting, to be able to present those things in a presentation as a line item.
That's our plan, but I want to address a couple of things that were said around the, around the, um, around the, the two week coming back. I, I, I'm hearing a lot of different things, and, and that's why I wanna have clarity. So I'm gonna um, try to get some clarity to this. I hear challenge, change, combine remote, um, combine cohorts. I hear challenge, change, combine remote, um, combine cohorts. I hear that message loud and clear. Then I hear come back in two weeks. Well, if we're gonna redo high school schedules to combine things. I'm redoing them again in two weeks. I think that's not a, a possible request. I think once you start combining and changing, you're changing schedules. And it's not that simple just to say we're gonna blend and do this. It doesn't happen that way. Not every teacher teaches A period English nine on two places where we can just do this. It does, you know what I mean? A cohort A and B at eight o'clock in the morning. It doesn't happen that way. It's not that clean. Um, it's a very complex schedule. And you know, we made a lot of adjustments to do the best we could in both in person and remote, knowing that we had a lot of staff that went out on family leave. And doing that. So that, that's not a possibility to switch that quick and do that. I wanna be very clear about that. The second part about um, combining cohorts, then uncombining them in two weeks would be challenging. So if the board's will was to go two weeks, we would most likely stay status quo with our typical cohort model. And I just wanna address that and say that's what it is. Our planning this morning to forecast was talking about combinations and, and, and blending of cohorts um, up until, you know, um, K through eight and looking at how is those possible? We haven't made decisions on that. We're at the first meeting of that, an hour meeting this morning to talk about that. Those are things we talked about. And then again, about interventions. What that does is allow for more time when you do that to intervene for those kids that are struggling or those kids that need extensions. And we talked about that. So those are all things that are on the plate and we will be prepared um, in the December meeting to talk about kinda what are we doing as we launch and go into that?
Okay, great. And, you know, and I just, you know, appreciate the opportunity to ask the questions. Because, you know, you guys live with this every day. I know you're spending, you know, I'm sure these meetings are incredibly frustrating sometimes because you are living and breathing this every day and you know, things, some things are very obvious to you because you live and breathe it every day, but we don't. So.
No, I appreciate the opportunity to explain it because it's not, it's, Cindy, you have a valid point there. It's not, it, there's no frustration on my point. It's a valid point. I appreciate the opportunity sometimes to talk about these things because they're, they're integral and they, they involve a lot of staff members, a lot of people and a lot of planning to make it happen. You know, um, our high school schedule starts now for next year. People don't realize that. We're going to our, you know, Jenna took part in our CIT meeting today, which is our, our, our replacement for Perk. And we talked about today about course, courses coming to us for next year's courses study. We're doing that now for next year. So that gives students the opportunity later in the, in the beginning of the spring to choose the courses they want. If we don't back that up and do the work now, we can't even get there. So it's, it's a, it's a over a year long process to just create a high school schedule. Last summer, our high school team, we talked about that last meeting, created that schedule in less than a month. It was, you know, it's close to I've seen a, a, of a, of a team performing something that wasn't possible, make it possible. And um, I, I cannot say enough about the work that high school team did to make that happen for our students. And really, it's working in a lot of ways for a lot of kids. Not everyone to Mark said, but for a lot of kids, it's really providing an education for them. Um, under the circumstances we're faced with, with COVID. So I just wanted, and I, again, I appreciate the opportunity to talk about that. Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, I, um, Andy, you, you had raised your hand a little earlier.
Yep. Is my mic working? Can you hear me? Cool. So first I have a question. When is the end of first semester? I was trying to find a calendar online, but I couldn't quickly find it.
Um, it's February, um, the first Tuesday in February. I don't have the date in front of me. Andy, you're asking me, I don't have a calendar in, in front of me. Um, we're remote tonight. I don't have my office. So uh, I think it's on my wall. But it's the first, uh, the second, it's, it's, it's the, the, the first uh, Tuesday, I believe in February. Don't quote me out, but it's very close around there is when it happens, right after January.
So here's, here's what I, I mean, so I laid out a cha- I mean, so my thought is, is that this is a, there's a pro con analysis you can do with the kids in school versus the kids fully remote. Especially during this period of time. And I certainly see the benefit and the need and the, and the value to have kids in school during this period of time. There, there's value that both social, emotional, there's kids that learn better. I get it because that's the model we wanna, all wanna get to. Um, I don't, I believe however, that what we're finding is that there's a lot, a lot of concern about how we're able to deliver the instruction in the current model, especially if we try to make it go remote without making change. Cause there's a belief that, uh, at least what I picked up in listening to parents' concerns. And again, I have no children in school. This is me listening to what other people say, that even though they're in school, they're not getting the level or the time of instruction maybe that they would expect. And if we then go remote using the same two cohort model, that will not necessarily improve unless we make a, a sort of a major shift or a major adjustment. And that's why I sort of did this challenge saying, can you combine the cohorts and do much more instruction during the week if we go fully remote? And I completely understand the fact that you can't go for two weeks, then shift back for two weeks and then go back for two weeks and stuff like that. The reason I asked is because in a perfect world, if you're gonna make this switch, you switch for the rest of the first semester so that you can continue in this higher intensity instruction model to get through the first semester and allow you to plan for the next one. The concern is, is that the delta between Martin Luther King Day, which is the approximate time we're talking and the second semester is a good, another couple of weeks. And I think that we don't wanna lose that in person instruction unless something dramatic happens that forces us to do it. So um, for me personally, I think that I would support it, and, and I'll just lay out my thought. Given everything that I've heard, I would support a remote instruction for the next, for the next, eh, through the Martin Luther King Day. As long as we can guarantee that we're gonna come up with a more aggressive instructional schedule that all kids, all students, whether they're currently remote or currently hybrid going into remote, will get. So it dramatically changes what teachers are able to do. And again, if the teachers aren't the problem, it's the circumstances that are the problem. And the teachers want, need to have the ability. I'm sure they wanna teach more. I'm sure they wanna engage more. So using different tools. Do, do we, we introduce Google? Do we introduce things like that? Look at that. I know it's a short timeframe, but I think there's some opportunities that we can do. And then when we get back after Martin Luther King Day, then you figure out how you can trition back into a model that gets you through the end of the semes- first semester. But takes our learnings and then builds the second semester as best we can to be able to do that. So for me, that is sort of the roadmap that I'd like to see as we go forward. So.
Thank you, Andy.
Any other comments? Any motions?
But he wants to make it. Okay, so for the purpose of discussion, I'll make a motion that we um, we make a decision as a board to go remote. Starting the Monday after Thanksgiving, which is I think November thirtieth, through the Martin Luther King holiday. Um, and we instruct as part of this remote that the district, um, and I'm gonna add this. I mean, and so it's the remote plus to make sure that the district increases the instructional time that's available to students during this period. Um, through increased instruction and, and support and utilize as much of the entire week as they can. So that's my motion.
Okay, discussion.
I think there needs to be something about special ed in there too. In the motion.
Yeah, it's um, I think that, eh, and, and here's where I think the discussion on the following, on our next meeting that we have. The week after Thanksgiving, I think we're gonna have a s- meeting that week sometime, but then whenever our next meeting is. We need to have Heather come in and talk about exactly how it's gonna be handled during this period for the special ed piece. You know, what can be done one on one remotely versus other situations and circumstances. Cause I, I agree, Lori, that that um, we have to have a proactive approach and a functional approach um, that makes sense to special ed. I don't know what that is, right? I, I'm not sure how to make the motion to, to say what it is, because I don't wanna force people to be in person if it's not, not safe or the staff is not able to do it. So it's.
We could say something like, we must create positive solutions with additional safety measures in place to meet the needs of all kids. Because that's what we're really talking about, meeting the needs of all kids.
I guess I'm not, I understand what you're saying and we could add that in the mo- the motion, I guess, which is sort of a guidance. So.
If I could pipe in, I think the motion that you made is for this district. When it comes to special education, I think IEP's drive needs, needs assessment and delivery of services. So I would hate to put a, a fine point to a motion that will cover a student body that has their own individual dust to name IEP, um, individual educational needs that should be addressed as such. And, and allow the district to do what they need to do to make sure those, those needs are met. So I'd be very apprehensive to blanket them into a motion for the district operations. But they, they need to be addressed on an individual basis and I'm sure they will be very, you know, but aggressively, but we'll find out how that will go in a couple of weeks.
Are we discussing or are we tweaking the motion? Cause I have a question.
You can do either.
Okay, so I just wanna back up for a second because the way Andy made the, made the motion, he talked about more direct instruction. And I, and I, I wanna, this question really is for you, John. I wanna uh, understand if I under- I want you to explain if I understood you correctly when you said, you said something that's like not a one to one. So let's say my son has first period marketing. Uh, on Mondays in cohort A. So when Wednesday rolls around and it's cohort, whatever, I can't keep them all straight, but whatever, you know what I'm talking about.
So odd even is the best way to describe it. Three, seven, you know, two, four, six, just to give you a simple.
Okay, right, right. So like in my mind, when the other cohort comes and has period one, the other half of his marketing class is there in period one. Is that not the case?
It's not that simple that they're always directly parallel with the same teacher. There's multiple teachers teaching it. So it could be not the same teacher teaching a section of marketing one.
Okay, so it scares me a little to make the motion in a way that says more direct instruction if it means like every kid's high school schedule is going to get completely rewritten, um, because that spells nightmare for you, but also for us and for our kids. If we're being honest. So I don't know how to fix that, but I'm just saying, like, when you said that, I was like, wait, 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 wait. You can't give my kid a whole new schedule for eight weeks and then that's not gonna work. I mean, I don't mean my kid. I mean, I think I'm speaking for like high school i- kids in general. I don't think any parent wants to go to remote and be like, okay, so we're starting with this whole new way of doing things.
Well, I think what you, we can say in the motion is that administration will make every attempt, you know, if possible.
Right. Where is possible to increase contact time? I heard Andy's message. Where possible to increase contact time was the challenge to do that. And, and I think that I hear the where possible and possible within the system.
Can I, can I say something?
Yeah, go ahead.
Yep. So uh, again, we'll do whatever uh, the board wants. Um, what I would say, uh, or, or ask to consider is this, uh, the, the, the real issue on the table, generally speaking, is, is whether or not the board wants to accept the recommendation that administration has made from November thirtieth, Martin Luther King Day. Uh, you've all, you know, very eloquently articulated your hopes for what we do to continue to improve. And um, whether those details are included in a motion or not, doesn't change the message that we are clearly hearing from you. And, and so I, I, I think that you are wish to include it, which again, if you do, that's perfectly fine, but is, is to, is to try to guarantee that we will attend to these things. And what I can assure you of is that we've got the message and that, that will happen, has already been happening. And will continue to happen and we'll share more of that on December seventh. So if, if, if the language is, is confusing to the at the general motion, I would say we've got the point. And uh, and it, it could be not necessarily included and, and, and we will continue to honor it. So um, that's what I would suggest just for ease, if that helps.
Well, eh, eh, for me, the, the motion is, and I, and I understand, Mark, that you, you get the point, you understand the point. But I, as a board member, want to make sure that we are doing this in a way, that we're, we're making a decision in a way that we're requiring that you do what you can to make it a fruitful experience when they go remote. I mean, and I don't know what that means, but I don't want, I, I would be very disappointed if I came back and didn't hear that there was some level of increased instructional opportunities for kids during this fully remote thing. For me, that is the carrot that would cause me to do it. So that's why I put it in there. It's not a hit against you or administration or teachers. It's a reality. Because if we're choosing to not send our kids into the building and we're saying it's gonna be fully remote, let's make it worth the while of making the change and take advantage of the eight contiguous weeks that we have, some holidays in between. Um, and, and be able to chat, do the challenges, the special ed challenges, the kids that take education outside of the district, you know, that go to those uh, vocational type classes. These are all challenges that need to be addressed in a short amount of time. Um, but I just wanna make sure that, that we're trying to take advantage of the opportunity of having everybody be remote and making it, making it a, a more beneficial experience for that period of time. That's, that's the reason I put it in there. So.
Um, I just have a quick question. Um, going remote, that's not necessarily contingent on whether we, I just wanna ask it now so I don't forget it. It's how will we handle lunches?
So uh, I'm thinking that we could tackle that question on December seventh, if the board wants to. Uh, you remember that we are uh, able through uh, federal money to um, support school lunch um, through the end of December. So we've been doing that every day. Um, every day since the school year started for r- remote families. And so that will continue through December. The thing that the board would want to take up would be whether it wishes to um, continue to extend that um, benefit to families um, starting in the school year, eh, eh, starting in the new year. Um, so the reason I didn't ask you to consider that tonight is because it's not imminent in that uh, your decision will impact that, because that goes through the end of December already. So I'm thinking that uh, if you wanna just table that for tonight and then have us raise it again on December seventh. Uh, or even the second meeting that, on the twenty first, we could do that. Um, so uh, that, that's uh, uh, completely up to the board to uh, how it wants to handle that.
So families that are normally in school, if right after Thanksgiving, we go remote, would they use the process that exists today, which is using the form that's on the website? And in essentially ordering pickup that way is that, I just wanna make sure that we kinda have some communication for those families where kids would be getting meals in school and then now they're not gonna have those meals. I just wanna see um, if there's any.
So, um, Matt, um, I, I, I wonder if you could just uh, uh, address that. I, I think, I think the answer is yes, but uh, since Cindy's asking.
So if we're not having school, your question is, are we going to provide the bag lunch available at the high school to have them pick up? Or have it delivered to them using STA as we have?
Whatever would be the plan.
We could do that.
Like we did when we went remote before?
Sure. Eh, eh, with the exception of, you know, holidays, because food service people don't work on Thanksgiving or the day after. Or Christmas, but yeah, if, if it's a, a regular day and um, we could have, they, they're gonna get paid anyway, so we can utilize them for that purpose um, all the way through.
Okay, that would be my preference.
Okay.
Um, I don't know if the board has any, anyone not, wouldn't, would it not be the preference of anyone else on the board? We don't need a motion for it, but just by a show of your hands if that sounds good.
Yeah, I, I think pa- past practice, people would probably come to expect that as a, as a service. And they have availed themselves of it. And I think it's something that uh, we would uh, look to continue from an administrative point of view.
Okay, that's great. Um, and then I would just ask that you put some instructions just on the website that can find, so it's really clear to them how they can sign up and, you know, kinda get in that program. people can find, so it's really clear to them how they can sign up and, you know, kinda get in that program. The other thing I just wanna point out, if we choose to go remote, is our school board meetings will go remote as well. At the beginning of the year, I said we would follow the calendar, we would follow as changes came, we'd go remote when kids went remote, and do remote meetings, and then be back in, um, when kids are back in, so. I just wanted to clarify that as well, so our next meetings will be remote. All right, any other discussions on the motion that's on the table? Was that you mad, or were you fixing your glasses?
I was fixing my glasses, I'm sorry.
Okay, I think then we will go ahead and take a vote. All those in favor of the motion, um, to grant, I, I, I wanna say it correctly, the, um, administration's recommendation, uh, with the caveat that administration will make every attempt to pro- to increase instructional time, live, if live type time, or, um, as much as possible, reasonably possible, um, from the Monday after Thanksgiving, which is November thirtieth, through Martin Luther King Day, which is January seventeenth?
Eighteenth.
Eighteenth.
The, the return back would be the nineteenth, which is that Tuesday.
Okay. Would be the return, okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? One, no abstain, so the motion carries four, one, zero. And with this, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Oh, I'm sorry, wait, wait, public comments. Public comments, um, so, um, with the public comments, Shannon, what's the count that you have, I know it was?
It's very high, it is at, I have to take the number and subtract one, because I had gotten the dress from someone. So we are at twenty-seven, um, public comments, I would have to be entered individually into, into record.
The board, we can include these in the minutes, in the public record, or we can read them? It seems like it's getting on the high side from my perspective.
I mean, I think the worst I ever had was fourteen or fifteen, and there's twenty-seven.
So I think what we will do there in this situation is we will add them to the public record. Shannon, do you have the wording in front of you about, um, if, about public comments, if they're disparaging to any of our staff directly? Do you have that, that you could read real quick, cause those are the, if we have any emails that fit that criteria, we won't be able to include them in our public comments.
Um, yeah, let me look it up, it's on the back of all of our agendas, so I'm just gonna pull that up.
Thank you very much, sorry to put you on the spot.
That, that's okay, just give me a moment and bear with me.
In, in the interim, while Shannon looks that up, I just wanna make sure that we're clear that the remote starts the Monday after Thanksgiving, November thirtieth, and that students still attend in their normal methodology before then, or, or we need to be clear on exactly how they attend school between now and then, in the beginning of Thanksgiving break, cause I think that might not have been clear in all of our discussions.
Well, in my, in my recommendation slide, I, I, um, which, you know, I can publish out, and I'm gonna be, uh, following this up tomorrow with a message to, um, all the community, but that it's, I can, I can lay it out, that the intention is for students in cohort A to come back on Monday, uh, students in cohort B to come back on Tuesday, then there's Thanksgiving, and then the, uh, November thirtieth and December first would be a no-school day for students, but a planning day for teachers, along the lines of you've all, and, um, you know, talking about. And then on, uh, Wednesday, December second, would be a return to remote instruction for students in cohort A, and then on Thursday, the third, it would be a return to remote instruction for students in cohort B. Um, and then, uh, we begin in earnest on December seventh.
I, I just wanted to be sure. Yeah, I, I wanted to just make sure that people understood that there was still school that was happening between now and the beginning of Thanksgiving, right? I just, so, so, and you will send that out in notification tomorrow with clarity, so I, I think that was good to reiterate, because you said it early in the meeting, so, right.
And there's, there's one, one more thing that I meant to ask, and that is about, um, families that have technology constraints or need, um, more equipment, um, what, what options are available for them?
So, uh, Nancy, uh, you know, we, we, uh, wouldn't have considered a recommendation like this if we didn't, uh, think that we had a good handle on that. So, um, I can, uh, I, I can provide more information to you on, uh, December seventh about that, or, uh, you know, I, I would put Nancy on the spot now for her to describe, but I, I can tell you that we, you know, have tried to take that into consideration too. Much of, uh, that was, you know, that's, uh, process for working through that was kind of fine-tuned, uh, over the spring and summer, so.
I would just say if you can.
We're in a much better position now through Nancy's planning and.
I would just say put that on the website as well, because parents are gonna, you know, they're, they're already planning, you know, um, when they don't have a lot of time to plan, unfortunately, so, you know, anything that, any information we can get to them to help them best prepare for November thirtieth, and the website would be appreciated.
Will do.
Are, are you ready?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, uh, speakers may offer such objective criticisms of school operations and programs that concern them. However, in public session, the board will not hear personal complaints of school personnel, nor will they hear complaints against any person connected with the school system. Other channels provide for the board's consideration and disposition of legitimate complaints involving individuals. The board vests its chairman or other presiding officer authority to terminate the remarks of any individual while they do not adhere to the rules established above as to content or time limitation.
Okay, so I just wanna be transparent about that, that that's one of the rules, so any of the emails that we've received that, um, that into that, that, um, that that covers, um, will not be posted into public record. Okay, I will enter.
Okay, I would like to make a motion to adjourn if you were gonna.
Yep, I'm ready, motion made by Shannon, second by Jenna, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose none, the motion carries five, zero, zero, thank you, and good night.
Good night, y'all.